Rebecca Eisenberg, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
For candidates that are running for the first time for public office, there usually is something that triggered their interest, that inspired them to step forward and do this. I'm interested in hearing what those things might have been. And I know that you've had several unsuccessful attempts to get onto a commission so far. So this dates back a couple of years. But how long have you lived in the community? And what caused you to want to step forward and get involved?
So I've lived in the community twice and worked in the community a few times. I first lived in the community from 1986 to 1990, when I attended college at Stanford. And that really was my first impression of Palo Alto, because I stayed out here every single summer during those years. When I graduated from Stanford, I went to law school at Harvard, and then I quickly came back to the Bay Area. And I worked for the internet industry, starting in 1995. And I quickly got a job, you know, jobs down here in Palo Alto, culminating with a six-year job that I landed down here. This is when I worked down here for PayPal. And that was the six years when I worked in Palo Alto, but couldn't afford to live in Palo Alto. I was newly married. It was 2001 when I started to work at PayPal. And I was commuting a couple hours every day. And every weekend, my husband and I looked at houses and looked at houses. And I'm a lawyer, he's a lawyer. But we couldn't afford to buy, starting in 2001. Ultimately, we gave up and I bought a house in San Francisco. Then, as our children started to age and go into private school, we just couldn't afford to keep paying for private school. Again, started trying to buy a house in Palo Alto. Finally, gave up again trying to buy a house in Palo Alto and just moved down here around 2013 to rent. And so we've been renting with our kids in school down here since then.
And so what was it that happened after you got here in 2013 that inspired your candidacy?
Well, you know, ironically, one of the reasons that we were eager to leave San Francisco is the politics there. Being attorneys, both my husband and I, while neither have really been before this, interested in running for politics. We've always been very active in them, mostly supporting other people's campaigns. We were very early supporters of Gavin Newsom, very early supporters of Kamala Harris for their various roles in, you know, in politics in San Francisco. Also, I was very active in the Hillary Clinton campaign in 2008. Even though my law school classmates all wanted me to join the Barack Obama bandwagon then, they were all working for him. But of course, I did join Barack Obama's bandwagon when he became the candidate, obviously. So he was two years ahead of me in law school, which was pretty exciting. And of course, he was a great president. We moved down here, you know, I expected, as my husband expected, that Palo Alto politics would be the way they were in the 1980s, when I lived here. Back then, there really, I really just felt a sense of trust in local government, a sense of trust we definitely didn't have when living in San Francisco. I mean, truly, San Francisco, you know, Palo Alto politics was one of the reasons we moved here. But it became increasingly clear over time that Palo Alto politics shared some of the same problems as San Francisco politics. And by that, I mean conflict of interest, corruption, lack of transparency, lack of accountability, lack of responsiveness to the community. Just like in San Francisco, it seemed that a very, very small group of people was pulling the strings here, something it still seems like, if you ask me. But again, I wasn't ready to run because I don't, running for office always seemed like a terrible process for me. I did apply, as you said, to sit on a commission, the Planning and Transportation Commission, because that's really where my passion and my background lies. As an attorney, I've done a lot of work with land use. And my husband actually is a land use litigator, I was a land use transactional lawyer. And I have 25 years of experience negotiating land use deals, including building a PayPal's, acquiring the land and design building PayPal's Operations Center in Omaha, Nebraska, which involved negotiating with local government, with Nebraska State Government, building this facility. And as you may have heard last night, you know, empowering the 500 individuals who work there, including getting them stock options so then they can buy houses. You know, that project, building, you know, design and building and launching PayPal's Omaha Office, which of course I did in collaboration with my amazing teammates, was one of my life-defining, positive experiences. And it had to do with planning and transportation, as there also, we negotiated a number of transit opportunities for the people who work there. Transit and planning really seemed, still seems, like an area where Palo Alto could use more, individuals with more experience in that area. And I, you know, I applied several times to be on the commission. The third time I applied, you may have noticed, I actually, having recognized that this city council wasn't going to appoint me, I didn't spend my time actually interviewing to be on that commission. Instead, I spent that time pointing out the conflict of interest in one of the members of that commission in hopes of cleaning up that corruption. And they did listen to me. And I succeeded in convincing them not to reappoint that person, who actually had been on commissions, I think, for like 16 years.
Who was that?
That was Asher Wells Fargo. But it could have been anyone. I think every single commission has people with conflict of interest. And I think, you know, that, it got to a point that that really bothered me. So why did I then decide to run? It wasn't just because I wasn't appointed to that commission. It was the growing concern with the fact that the city government was just not responsive to community interests, not taking into account the best interests of the community and basically any of the decisions it was making. I mean, obviously, the Castelaya, you know, Castelaya project, which we've communicated about, and is, in my mind, stands out as a, my man stands out as an example where the city council has failed to enforce its own laws, you know, and its own conditional use permit with a party who's extremely wealthy and has a lot of, carries a lot of political weight, I think because of its wealth and because of its huge donations.
So before, I want to chop this up a little bit.
Yeah, yeah.
Because we've got a lot of topics to go through.
Yes, sorry. So that's why I ran.
So you mentioned that a small group of people is basically controlling what happens here in Palo Alto.
I think.
Who is, what is that group? Who are those people?
So I want to clarify that this is the perception I have.
Right.
I don't know any of this for fact. It appears to me that the commercial developers and real estate investors who own a lot of the land here, Sobratos, Lloyd's Brothers. I've heard John Schenck speak a lot at these city council meetings. Every time he speaks, I then raise my hand to point out that he's actually a landlord and not a retail business. He speaks on behalf of retail and restaurants. And I think it's only appropriate that he introduce himself as, in his role as a landlord and not as a retail business. So, and, you know, others who, I don't, I don't really know who they are. What, all I can say is that time after time, you know, even AJ Capital, time after time, we see the city council bend to the needs of the wealthiest few. And I think it's, you know, even the processes that they create for the way they run their meetings are extremely biased in favor of the applicants, especially the wealthy applicants. Now, I spent a couple of years researching how other municipalities actually run their meetings for their planning commission and for their city council meetings to see if they run it differently. And as it turns out, Palo Alto is fairly unusual in the way that it runs its meetings. You know, very often, they say, oh, we're forced to reach this conclusion or we're forced to follow this strategy. But this is a system they themselves created. The way they run their meetings is pursuant to the municipal code that they drafted and the operations manual that they wrote. So, or their local rules, they call it. And here's what they do. The applicant, let's say AJ Capital, gets an opportunity, 10 minutes to present, you know, with their very, very expensive lawyer and a PowerPoint slide presentation. And, you know, I'll describe it as the way it is during the lockdown and their faces on video. Applicant gets 10 minutes to present. Then often, the community gets one to two minutes each to speak. And then there will be typically half the people speaking on behalf of, you know, disagreeing with what the applicant wants to do. And then half the people maybe are backing the applicant with, including sometimes, most of those people don't even live in the community. Then the city council gets to ask questions. Then the applicant gets to speak again. But nowhere during this time is anyone officially formally speaking on behalf of the community. Nowhere officially is there a voice explaining why we have these rules in place, why the municipal code was written so that, for example, here's, you know, here's an example that's now being discussed. Castelaya wants to put a huge underground garage in an area of their land that isn't underneath where they want to put their ginormous school structure. And Castelaya's lawyers have a very fancy argument to interpret the municipal code that is clearly written to apply to homes and a basement underneath it, to argue that this huge garage that's also going to have a swimming pool and other, and other areas, that that shouldn't count as part of the square footage. Not kidding. And they say it shouldn't count as square footage because it's not a basement. Okay?
Okay. In your interest, I want, I want to move on.
Okay. So anyway, there's nowhere, nowhere. Does there, is there someone on behalf of the community arguing why it is?
Got it.
That we count basements in that case.
One of your proposals on your website is, "Halt all office construction until businesses and landlords pay fair share." So do you support basically a moratorium on commercial development if elected?
Yeah, I mean, that's in, yeah, well, I support a moratorium on office development until the office, until these companies, the commercial developers and the businesses that they're landlords and the businesses sometimes that own these, actually are contributing to our bottom line, paying taxes. Or otherwise, I also support it unless there's compelling public interest in having that office development.
What do you mean until they're paying their fair share? Because that's kind of open-ended and that could just mean we're never going to have office development again.
Well, you know, every other, every other city in the state, I think probably in the country, taxes their businesses, their commercial developers. So that's not, you know, that's, to make us do the same thing that every other city in the country does, I think is a super reasonable request. So yeah, I think we need to have a tax on them.
Okay. So you're talking specifically about business tax, moratorium until there's a business tax?
Or until their, until their fees, you know, are commensurate with their costs on the city. Right now, their, you know, their fee, their, what do you call those fees? They, not, this is right.
Housing mitigation fees?
Thank you, yes. That, until those actually, you know, compensate for the costs they have on our, on our city government. And I do not believe that they do. And there are many studies that show that they are under, you know, under representative, they don't compensate for all the costs they create.
I've heard you say that a business tax could pay for housing, healthcare, transportation, et cetera. I'm curious, how much money could we get from this business tax? Because that's a lot of things to pay for.
Yeah, it is. But yet, we have the biggest opportunity potentially in the country with our business tax. We have, you know, first of all, I want to clarify, I'm not talking about taxing small businesses or medium-sized businesses. I'm not talking about taxing retail or restaurants or any business that serves consumers and serves residents. Let's start with only, start with some of the biggest companies. Let's start with companies that have 500 employees and/or $300 to $500 million in revenues. We don't know the exact numbers because our city council doesn't ask, doesn't even ask. But here's what I can tell you. If we just look at five of the biggest companies that have significant offices here, I'm talking about Tesla, Palantir, Amazon, Facebook, and Google, all of which have significant office presences here. All five of these companies have been profitable since the pandemic, have actually made money off of the pandemic. They are not hurting. They're, they're banking from everybody else's suffering with everyone else's suffering. Our suffering has helped their bottom line. These companies can afford to pay a tax. And in every other city, they do pay a tax. In fact, in East Palo Alto in Mountain View, when both municipalities actually proposed taxes of these companies on their ballots, they didn't even object. Google didn't even object to their tax in Mountain View. And Google pays 55% estimated of all the business tax proceeds in Mountain View. Google, in East Palo Alto, that's said to be Amazon. These, I don't even, I've heard that Amazon didn't even write a contrary position to this business tax in their, in their tax brochure. These huge companies, they expect to be taxed. Yet, in May, our city council voted seven to zero not to tax them. Instead, our city council decided to put 100% of the cost of the recovery on us, the residents. They did that when they decided that businesses should not contribute to the recovery. I am furious. We all should be furious. That might have been May, I mean, March rather than May, by the way. When the city council and when every single one of my opponents says that we should wait until after the recovery to tax businesses, they are condemning all residents to the fate of paying for the recovery and watch as more and more of our small business, our retail and our restaurants continue to go out of business. My favorite bar, The Nut House, just folded. Mayfield's Cafe, and we're going to see so many more of them with a tax on just the biggest, just the biggest few. We could literally raise hundreds of millions of dollars because these companies have billions of dollars of revenue based right, created right here in Palo Alto. So yes, we could pay for all these things and more.
So hundreds of millions of dollars? I'm not familiar with the economics. Is that, well, for what period of time would that be?
Annually. I mean, again, I don't have these numbers because Palo Alto has chosen not to ask for revenue numbers from the businesses that are here. All I have is the documents that these companies have filed publicly with the SEC. When Palantir filed to go public, as we know now, Palantir is a perfect example. Palantir was born in Palo Alto. It has been based in Palo Alto for the past 20 years. It raised money from investors who are based in Palo Alto. It has, it has used, you know, we have given it city services for 20 years without it paying back. Now, according to its own filings, you know, and as said by the Wall Street Journal and other sources, it has an estimated valuation of $20 billion and estimated revenues of up to $2 billion a year. Now, look at Palantir alone. Palantir, a company that is, is based, its headquarters is here. I was told not to do math. No, it still is. I think, I believe that Palantir said it's moving in response to my campaign and others, that it's now threatening to leave, something it hasn't said before, threatened to leave because of a business hostile, you know, atmosphere. No one in Palo Alto was even talking about taxing Palantir until I started talking about Palantir. I may have actually influenced Palantir. And you know what? If, A, it's not going to leave because it loves it here. It said it may leave, it has no plans of leaving, has it? It may know it not, other than that one secondary announcement that was in the Post. I don't even think you covered it. Did you also have an article about?
I think they, in their SEC.
They're looking into it? I've, I've spent years written these SEC, you know, you know, these, you know, they're not allowed to make forward-looking statements, you know, they were required.
Let's not, I want to.
So no, they have made no commitment to leave and they have no reason to leave. Unless we tax them, but even then, they won't leave because statistically, the business tax has zero influence on whether a company decides to settle in a town. Rather, the businesses just choose, and this is based on studies from the Harvard Business Review and Stanford Graduate School of Business, the primary reason that businesses choose locations is for their access to recruiting pools. If big companies choose not to live in Palo Alto, I believe, like many studies show, it'll be because of our lack of affordable housing. We actually don't have enough housing to support their employees.
The city estimated that a business tax, if it's similar to the ones in Mountain View and East Palo Alto, would raise between $14.6 and $31 million. So I'm not sure those revenues will be enough to pay for the breadth of things.
Their, their business tax is broken.
But, but I did want to ask, like, if you had that kind of money, like, would you spend it all on affordable housing? How would you divvy it up? And what kind of infrastructure projects do you think?
I love that question. First of all, I want to clarify that the business tax that Palo Alto was proposing was a terrible business tax. I don't think it was like Mountain View's.
The head tax, the, so when you talk about business tax, you're not talking about per employee, $150 kind of thing?
So, to clarify, so the business tax that the city was proposing, if I understand it correctly, it was a pure headcount tax. And I think it started out with companies that were really small and was just a, just a strict monetary figure according to how many people worked at a company. That at least, what they got right is that it's progressive rather than regressive. So that, I think, you know, I'm not opposed to a headcount tax of that sort, although I think it absolutely should not, should not click in till there's a certain number of employees, like 300 or 500. So that, I think, they got wrong. Second, what other cities are doing, such as San Francisco, is that they're raising the headcount. A, raising the headcount according to what the salary is of employee, that's not, that's not a headcount, that's called a payroll tax. And that actually is a far more progressive approach towards taxation. There, if there's no reason that a company that has, you know, mostly SEIU, you know, $50,000 a year workers should pay $800 a year per worker, you know, the same as a venture capital firm that pays an associate $300,000 a year. That's why actually payroll taxes are better ways of taxing headcount than headcount taxes. Second, that they didn't include a receipts tax, which is another very common way of taxing businesses. A receipts tax taxes revenues created by companies. That way, Palantir and Tesla would be taxed at a higher rate than a smaller company. But then again, I don't even think we should be taxing any small companies at all. So I think that they needed to actually write a better tax. But at least they were going to put a business tax in. That's why I need it. Because these things, these calculations require business savvy and they require an understanding of financial matters. You know, you have to be good at math, you have to understand business, and you have to know how to work with experts and work with the, you know, I'm a big fan of PowerPoint slide presentations. I guess they're called decks now. And really helping others explain. I mean, I think now you all understand the difference between a headcount tax and a payroll tax. That's why I think I'd be a benefit to the, to the council, help others understand why one approach is better than another.
So following up on part of Janati's question, which was, how do you think the business tax, should the city enact it and get the revenues in? How should it be spent? What would your priorities be?
Right, thank you. Where, I mean, in my campaign, in my platform, I made it clear that we are failing on, in many, but I pointed out five fundamental human rights that I consider, you know, we absolutely can afford. Housing, starting with the most affordable housing, starting with low, low-income housing. And of course, transitional housing for homeless, which by the way, we may not need a business tax to pay for because the state of California, and I have something I'm writing about this, by the way, I need to submit to you all. The state of California has, keeps releasing these huge grants of money, most recently $600 million, to cities to fund, you know, housing for the transitional homeless. Mountain View just received a $12.3 million grant from state money that we didn't even apply for. So first, so first, I, first I want to say, I would take advantage of all the other sources of funding available to us. And we've been dropping the ball on that. I'm talking, you know, there are hundreds, there's been billions of dollars of state and federal money made available for affordable housing and for transitional, transitional housing, transitional homes for the, for homeless that we haven't even applied for. Additionally, you know, there are many nonprofits that, nonprofit homeless organizations that would be thrilled to work with us, as well as foundations that actually do offer grants. I've been actually speaking with a friend of mine who's on the Board of Life Moves about how these types of housing projects are funded without even any input from the city. That said, I do think, even with all those grants, we're going to need to have, you know, pay for more housing. We need to start with what the state has correctly decided is our, and ABAG has correctly determined to be our number one priority, and that is housing for the lowest income. Then, low income. Then, below-market income. Lastly, actually, we've, this is the one number it appears we're going to make of our ABAG requirements, market housing. So, housing, second.
So quick interjection there. So with the money for BMR housing, affordable housing, workforce housing, would that be spent on what exactly?
Well, that's something that we need to do with, in cooperation, you know, with the planning department, with hopefully, our Department of Affordable Housing, which we don't have. You know, that would be fantastic. Where we have, I would like to see people at work just dedicated solely to this, solely to getting housing grants and solely to determining how best this money should be spent. This is, you know, and with the earlier question, like the business tax, this isn't all, you know, this expertise isn't in me. This is an expertise that comes from collaboration with others. But we need to get the data. As I keep pointing out, Palo Alto has not been collecting data. So one aspect of this that I do want to point out about housing before I get quickly to the other four, is that what other cities are doing is that I think with great success, and I'm so excited about this, by the way, is why I receive. Is they're actually acquiring land for the city. And I've been looking at, you know, I've been following very closely and in conversation with the really amazing folks who are involved in the North Ventura X-Net project. And I have this huge crush on Palo Alto Networks PANS Alternative M, which involves the city acquiring some land. The city, by the way, I also hate airplane noise. And I'm super resentful that our city, you know, set aside $20 million to further the Palo Alto airport. Anyway. Okay, so anyway, so.
What are the other four points?
So the city should acquire land. City can acquire land. It's a, look at Stanford, how much wealth they've gained that way. Stanford is brilliant. Let's learn from them. I've got great connections there. Let's meet with them. Other four things, healthcare. We can afford to provide healthcare to everyone in our city. We can do a lot better than what we're doing in testing. We can afford to isolate and quarantine everyone who needs to be for COVID and provide regular healthcare for everyone. Childcare, we can't, we can't reopen the economy without childcare. Education, the city used to provide some, it used to provide $6 million to education, to our public schools. Now, after, when it terminated the Cumberley lease, now it provides only about $2 million. So basically, they considered that a very valid budget cut to take $4 million from our public schools. No, thank you. Fifth is transit. City council had promised us a robust system of electric shuttles. We need that. And by the way, that's something we can work with Tesla about. We could be having Tesla electric shuttles. We haven't even asked them. That, what we need to realize is that just because something helps us doesn't mean that it hurts the businesses that we're asking things for, from. And that is the open pie attitude that I will bring to the city council. I'm a negotiator. I believe that the best agreements help everybody at the table. We have outrageously huge amounts of opportunity here. And I've been told that some of my, some of my plans are pie in the sky. But I'm a person that convinced the SEC that PayPal has a business model to allow the SEC to take PayPal public. I'm a person who created housing, who actually brought housing to 500 operations centers, center workers in Omaha, Nebraska. I am a person that completed the sale of the Flip Video Company to Cisco, closed it one week before the iPhone released video and the, Apple released video on the iPhone. These things are not impossible. I work harder than anyone you'll ever meet. And I work great in teams. I love my coworkers on every project. People love to work for me. I have so much, so many plans, great plans to really help the people of Palo Alto. I know that your endorsement changes minds. I'm new to politics. I get it. But I'm not new to working. I'm 52. I've been a lawyer the vast majority of my life. I have a record of success. I have true accomplishments. And you know me from our conversations, I'm a good person. And I care. I know I'll be an asset to the city. I humbly and passionately request your endorsement. I thought that was a pretty good closing. Yeah. You looked like you were wrapping up.
Well, yeah, because we wanted to get to a few more quick questions.
I'm happy to answer whatever you, I can. I have another closing too.
But in the past, the business license was often talked to as a way to pay for grade separations. And I notice that's not one of the things you mentioned. You talked about transportation. So do you?
I can talk a lot about grade separation.
How about 30 seconds?
Yeah, if you think the business should be used to fund that or if you support the grade separation.
I supported, I supported tunnel, and I'm glad you asked that because I looked at the citywide tunnel that was just, I looked at every report I could find available and did a couple requests for information from the city. A big unanswered question is what will be revealed when a tunnel goes underground? Early, 10 years ago, I'm sure you all remember, when this tunnel idea was first proposed, all the media said that it would reveal something like 45 to 50 acres of usable land that potentially could be owned by the city. Some people maybe say that land belongs to Caltrain, but my experience with negotiating these types of contracts is that very often, Caltrain actually just owns an easement, which is the right to use the land, and the land still would revert to the city.
Quick question, do you mean like a citywide tunnel or a South Palo Alto tunnel?
I'm talking about underneath the ground in all of Palo Alto and in, in collaboration with Menlo Park. Because Menlo Park actually pulled its tunnel idea in response to us pulling ours.
Okay. And then just to add to that, are you believing that we ought to just suspend the discussion about the grade crossings, given the situation with the Caltrain, Caltrain's futures?
Oh, no, I think that, no, I think transit is an urgent matter that we need to address right away. I think.
So you think the council should proceed with making a decision on the approach to grade crossing?
I think that council should proceed with making the right decision.
Of course.
And I think that the, that council has not been heading down the right path.
Right.
So yes, I think suspending this decision is the absolute worst thing. Now, having an interim measure while working on a longer-term plan is, I think, an approach. But delaying a decision, which is usually council's approach, is a terror, it's always bad to delay a decision. What they should say, what is said in the business world is, we recognize that making this final decision is a big investment. So we realize we're going to need a year to make this decision. So let's talk now about what we're going to do for the next year as an interim approach. That's what council should have done. That's not what it's doing. Putting off a decision later, later is a decision. That decision is to revert to the least expensive, fastest means, regardless of what's in the best interest of the community.
You support transforming city council members into full-time positions with government-rate salaries? Why is that important to you?
That's extremely important to me. So we'll have a, so we'll have, our local government can reflect the actual demographics of the city. It is impossible for a working person to, to, to take on the job of city council. I also want to mention, I also support publicly funded elections. And so you know, I am not engaging in this arms race of who raises the most money. I want to put it out there that the amount of money a city council person, a candidate raises on the way to being a city council member has zero, zero relationship to how good of a city council person that they will be, how effective they'll be in their job. I also believe it may actually have a, a negative correlation with it because the last thing we need is a city council who spends all its time with rich people. So when I rethought my position about this a few weeks ago, I made a decision not to ask any other wealthy person for money, never to have a call that it was just asking for money. I do not do that. So if you criticize me for not making as much, raising as much money as other people, I deserve to be commended for spending my time with the actual people of Palo Alto and not making any phone call that's transactional. That is not the way to treat the person at the other end of the phone. And we in Palo Alto deserve better. So I, I believe that city council should be a full-time paid job for two reasons. One is so that people who work for a living can have an opportunity to serve. Many people in our city actually have to work multiple jobs to even be able to afford to live here. These people cannot, do not have time to spend the 20-plus hours. I intend to spend 40, 50, 60-plus hours, no matter what I'm paid, at the city council job. That's because I've been an attorney for 30 years that I can do that. Second, there are too many conflicts of interest on city council. Our mayor works for Ford. We should not allow any conflicts of interest on our city council. When our council people have to choose between the boss that pays them and the boss that elected them, time after time, they choose the boss that paid them. And that should not even be a decision they have to make. With full-time jobs set at the median or whatever the city determines to be acceptable, we will have a representative city council who serves the community above anybody else.
And that's a great place to end. So thank you very much, Rebecca Eisenberg. Good luck to you.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time.